Things meeting.
It doesn't work.
The time is now 6:02. At this time, we request all cell phones or pagers be turned off or put in the silent mode. We also ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentation portion of the meeting. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. We're happy to have our third student representative with us tonight. Austin Young is a senior at Estero High School, where he's part of the Cambridge Academy and received his Advanced International Certificate of Education, AICE diploma, with distinction earlier this year. What he enjoys most is being active with his school and community and working with other people. Currently, Austin serves as president of the National Honor Society, president of the Debate Club, chairman of the AICE Student Union, student council treasurer, guitarist for the Varsity Jazz Band, and he's a varsity tennis player. And I don't know what he does in his spare time.
He goes fishing.
Austin's favorite subjects are history and economics. He's been accepted to the University of Florida and will most likely be attending there this fall. His goals for the future are to become a civil rights and constitutional attorney, or perhaps pursue a career in public policy. Austin feels passionate about education because learning new things is his number-one source of motivation. We're glad to have you with us and look forward to your comments toward the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
This evening's agenda includes the invocation, presentation of colors and Pledge of Allegiance, four recognitions, one acknowledgement, public comment, consent action items, which include three under executive services, seven under business and finance, twelve under operations, two under teaching and learning, one superintendent's recommendation, two items for public hearing, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Mrs. Dozier. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Mrs. Morgan will deliver tonight's invocation, after which Mrs. Fisher will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd ask you to please stand and remain standing until the colors are retired from the room.
I would like to share some thoughts with you as we begin tonight's meeting. We are meeting here as a school board and community to advance educational opportunities for every child in this district. We want to help our students be the best they can be. Let us take this moment to consider the importance of the responsibility each one of us has in raising and educating the children of this community. Let us remember to thank every member of this learning community for whom educating children is a calling and a passion. Let us be patient as we work together, be open and transparent in our conduct, and be prepared to embrace challenge and change. Let us strive to do good here, to be honest and ethical in our dealings, and to serve the children of this district to the best of our abilities. Thank you.
Tonight, the cadet presenting the national colors will be introduced by First Sergeant, retired Michael Trent, Army instructor for the JROTC program at Riverdale High School. First Sergeant Trent retired from the Army after 20 years of active military service. This is his 22nd year teaching in the Lee County School District. He holds a degree in general studies.
The national colors for our Pledge of Allegiance tonight are presented by Cadet Miranda from Riverdale High School's junior ROTC program. Cadet Miranda is the president of the board and is finishing his fourth year in JROTC. Cadet Miranda has been a squad member, company commander, battalion executive officer. He's an excellent student with a 3.98 GPA. Cadet Miranda has been a member of the color guard, drill team, raider team, and rifle team for four years. Cadet Miranda is pursuing an Army ROTC scholarship and hopes to attend the University of South Florida. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask Mr. Bill McCormick and Ms. Debbie Kraus to please join me at Mr. McCormick is the director of Fort Myers Institute Technology, and Ms. Kraus is the technical support specialist. The Sunshine State School Public Relations Association is an organization dedicated to the needs, goals, and professional development of public relations experts who specialize in education communications. The Sun Spar Gold Medalist Awards Program recognizes school officials, districts, and schools from around the state for outstanding planned total education public relation programs. Awards are given by outstanding submissions that may include anything from annual reports, social media apps, videos showcasing programs on school campuses, themed crisis communication plans, et cetera. Fort Myers Institute Technology received three, count that, three gold medal awards for the following projects. Categories: Best Promotion Videos, School and the Publications and Public Relations Tools category for their promotions, videos highlighting the available programs, career options at their locations, Best Overall Image, Brand and Campaign, School and Programs and Projects category for the video highlighting, the school's extensive rebranding process, and Best Offer Programs and Projects, Schools and Programs and Projects category for the video about their education, and Edison Festival of Lights Parade float. The award was presented on Wednesday, June 19, 2013, during the FAS summer conference held at the Grand Hyatt in Tampa. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize Fort Myers Institute of Technology for winning three 2013 Sunshine State School Public Relations Association's Gold Medalist Awards.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Just very quickly, I'd like to thank the school board for its continued support of the Fort Myers Institute of Technology and all the things we do out there at the tech center. I'd also like to publicly recognize and thank Ms. Debbie Kraus, who's our tech support specialist at our school, who really is a staff member that is responsible most for pulling together all of the public relations and marketing activities that we undertake at the school. And so without her great efforts, this would not have been possible. So Debbie, thank you very much, and thank you, school board.
of North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, Ms. Lori Carlson, assistant principal, Ms. Allison Robyn, drama teacher, Ms. Teresa West-Taylor, art teacher, Ms. Holly Cruth, art teacher, and Ms. Lori Madley, dance director, to please join me here at the lectern. Here they come. On March 15, 2013, the Arts School Network designated North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts as a 2013 through 2015 exemplary school, and in October of 2013, they received the Arts Innovation Award. The 2013 through 2015 exemplary school designation is presented to an Arts School Network member school in recognition of its efforts to evaluate strategically its purpose, operations, and educational programs. This honor signifies that North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts has successfully completed a self-evaluation in the areas of strengths, areas for improvement, consistency with school-wide R-program purposes, aspirations, and future challenges. Students who attend North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts have access to all of the arts program through direct arts instruction or through the arts being infused into the student's academic curriculum. Its students are consistently encouraged to commit to artistic and academic mastery and to participate in North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts mini-school and community artistic and academic endeavors. North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts also received the Arts Innovation Award. This award is presented to a member school that has broken the mold, and I stand here and attest to the fact that they have definitely broken the mold, in using the arts as a vehicle for teaching academics and making a positive difference in the lives of students and/or the community. The Arts Innovation Award was presented during the Annual Arts School Network Conference that took place in October 22 through the 25, 2013, at NYU's Tisch School of the Arts in New York City. In attendance were North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts teachers, Ms. Cruth and Ms. Robyn, along with Dr. Santini. And I know that Dr. Santini probably won't tell you, but he also presented at that conference. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts for being designated a 2013 through 2015 exemplary school and granted the Arts Innovation Award. And I think someone has these prestigious awards that you'd like to give.
Yes, we do.
Please do.
Yes. Good evening. I'm Mary Palmer. I'm from Orlando, Florida, but I'm here tonight representing the board of the Arts Schools Network, which is a nationwide organization of art schools. And it's quite a prestigious group to belong to, and not only does North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts belong to this group, they are leaders in this group. And it's quite an honor for me to be here to share with you their wonderful Arts Innovation Award. This award, as Ms. Dozier told us, this award really recognizes outstanding programs that are doing something special and beyond what would be expected of an exemplary arts program. And in the case of North Fort Myers, you see more teachers here than those that were mentioned, because all of these teachers and about 80 more that are back at the school are participating in arts integration. And arts integration is a movement that is bringing the arts into play with all of the curricular areas. And so these teachers are trying out new ideas, and they're really upping the achievement of their students. And so it's a great honor to present this Arts Innovation Award to Dr. Santini and these fabulous teachers. And I also want to say to this school board, I did read up about you and the wonderful things that you're doing here, and Dr. Graham's wonderful leadership for the arts and for everything else that's going on in your school. But arts programs don't succeed without leadership from the top and from the work that you're doing. We really appreciate it, and we know that it's making a difference. The arts have transformed North Fort Myers Academy with their 1,037 children, 72% on free and reduced lunch. These children have helped to transform the whole surrounding community, because they're being, the school is being such a part of that community. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you to Doug Santini. It's a pleasure to present this exemplary school award to the North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts.
Behind me is the people that make it go. You can tell that. They're great teachers and we're very fortunate. About 12 years ago, 13 years ago, the school board wanted to find something to make a change at the academy. And they tried many things. They tried to make it a gifted school, make it the gifted center. They tried all different ways of trying to change the school because of the images that were happening at that time. And they came across the arts. And some people back then probably laughed at the arts, because they probably thought, well, maybe in Sun Coast and that area, maybe they needed a mechanic shop, something like that. But the arts has transformed the whole area. Unbelievable what's happened with it. What's happened with the parents when they come in to the shows and the programs. They know how to go to a ballet. At one time, a parent come up to me one time and say, "Dr. Santini, that's the first time I've ever been to a play where no one said a word." And that was one of the ballets that we were doing. So you can imagine what happens in the communities. So it's really helped everyone, helped the young people. It's thriving. There's so many things happening there that you can't believe what's happening with it. And for the school board to support it, one of the members on this board right now, Mrs. Dozier, was on the board that decided, made that decision at that time. And when I came on to be the principal of the school, Dr. Browder called me, and I said, "Dr. Browder, I don't draw. I don't sing. I don't play an instrument. Now, I have done some acting," and as a principal, you have to act anyway sometimes. I've done some acting. That's about all. And he says, "I'm not hiring you to be an art teacher. I'm hiring you to be the principal." And he says, "I think you know enough people in the area, and you will turn this school around to where it is today." And, you know, he had a lot of wisdom there when you stop and think about it. And I think Mrs. Dozier helped with that wisdom when she was part of it, too. So thank you again. It's a great place to be. I only stayed at other schools six years. I've been there 11, because it's so much fun. It's really exciting every day when you see the boys and girls come in, and they give you high fives, and they're all excited about going to school. And when you're in middle school, that's something else. So thank you again, guys. Thank you.
Take the picture.
and Ms. Kayla DeFour to please join me at the lectern. Mrs. Stroh is the district's coordinator for Social Studies, Fine Arts, Character Education, and Avid. Ms. Bueno is the principal of Island Coast High School. Ms. Perez is the digital and web design teacher, and Ms. DeFour is a 12th grade student at Island Coast High School. The board will recognize a student each month during the school year as the winner of the Character Education Digital Design Competition. The winner for the month of March is Kayla DeFour. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to congratulate Kayla DeFour for her creative design and supporting character education in our schools.
Good evening. Kayla, as you can see on the screen to our right and left, is a very talented and skilled young lady. She has a very bright future ahead of her, and she studies and practices under a highly professional and highly skilled instructor, and that's Mrs. Perez. We're both very proud of everything that Kayla's accomplished this year, and this is just one example. Thank you.
Chanel Walker, a senior at Riverdale High School, to please join me at the lectern. Since 1994, the Wendy's High School Heisman Program has honored more than 395,000 of the nation's most esteemed high school seniors in partnership with the Heisman Memorial Trophy Committee. They believe in the pursuit of athletic and academic excellence with integrity. The award is an honor reserved for students who excel in mathematics, athletics, and leadership. Chanel is one of those students. She currently holds a GPA of 5.31 and is a member of the top 1% of all seniors in Lee County academically. As a student athlete, she is a four-year varsity member of the volleyball, basketball, and track teams. She is a member of Riverdale's International Baccalaureate Academic Program. Chanel has over 100 community service hours with various organizations, from youth sports to work with elderly Alzheimer's patients. She has earned numerous awards and honors and is very involved in several school and community activities. And I have to say that I read her application and the recommendations, and the recommendations were she has a great work ethic. Well, that's obvious. And she says in her application she looks for balance in her life. She looks to have a well-rounded lifestyle, and she is obviously an academic athlete and someone who cares deeply about community service. So congratulations.
I just wanted to add a couple things that weren't on there. Chanel has signed a full scholarship to the University of Iowa in the Big Ten to play volleyball. She has the most impressive resume of anyone I've ever dealt with since I've been a principal. She's not only a Wendy Heisman winner, which is only one male and one female in the whole state, which we've never had one in this area. She's also the state representative on the Florida High School Athletic Association Student Rep, which there's only 12 of those. And she does everything at the school. You name it, she does it. She's our biggest advertisement for the IB program, because they say if you're an IB student, you can't do it all. Well, you can do it all.
Thank you.
the month of March is courage. And what an appropriate picture to have up there. Courage. The personal strength to face difficulties, obstacles, and challenges. Be brave. Make positive choices. Courage. positive choices. Courage is resistance to fear, mastery of fear, not absence of fear. And that was a quote by Mark Twain. Thank you.
At this time, we'll take a very brief recess. Those who wish to leave may do so. We'll come back into order very shortly.
a card, but to which to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Mr. Scott, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment of the school board are posted at the back of the room and include the requirement that any speaker who is to address the board to endorse the purchase of a product or a service in which that speaker has a personal interest, the speaker must reveal that interest before making comment to the board. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. The time allowed per speaker is three minutes. Mr. Scott, I have three cards this evening.
All right. Is there anyone on the right side who did not turn in a card that would like to speak? On the left side? If you would call the first card.
Our speaker is Mr. Paul Schaefer.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, Paul Schaefer. I'd like to speak on four agenda items, A2, B1, B6, and B3. The first three agenda items all deal with copiers. You have three different proposals out for copiers, all piggybacks. One is for $150,000. One is an add-on of $100,000 to a contract of $400,000. And the third one is a contract, is a bid for $150,000 totaling $800,000. Now, you probably asked, "Well, why do we have these separate bids?" And they'll say, "Oh, they're different departments." Well, this is true. But each department has an accounting code that you can bill back to, where you could take these and bundle them all together and put out your own RFP and probably save some money for the district, rather than just piggybacking. Also, you would have low, probably local vendors doing the work. Two of them, two of these bids do have the same local vendor. So, that's just one of my concerns. The other one is I noticed that we have a furniture bid out that we're piggybacking with Hernando County for $100,000. I have heard from local vendors that they tried to submit proposals, bids in here, and they're turned away. They're not even being considered. And I find that a travesty that we are not letting local vendors bid on local tax dollars in our community and we're sending it out to other communities. I think that we need to address this and look at it so these vendors have a fair chance in bidding on our proposals. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Ms. Jill Castellano.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Graham. I'm Jill Castellano, and I'm a teacher in Lee County. My comments tonight concern an article printed in the news press on February 25th concerning class size. I'm a high school social studies teacher and have serious concerns about increasing the number of students in our classrooms. Being a secondary teacher, I'm especially concerned for reasons I'll explain. The article did not state a number by which secondary class size would increase, but for argument's sake, let's say we raise a high school core class from 25 to 28 students. While three additional students does not sound like much when broken down by period, but by adding three more students to each class, that gives a teacher an additional 21 students, which is basically an eighth class period with no additional planning. This year, the district has implemented PLCs in all schools, and our PLCs were expected to analyze test data for each student and use that data to drive our instruction. That data is being used to figure out which students need to be re-taught and which students need enrichment because they've mastered the desired benchmarks. While I believe analyzing test data to know which benchmarks the students have mastered is quality teaching, it's also time-consuming. Most secondary teachers are given approximately 80 minutes of planning every other day, and in that time, we're expected to meet with our PLC groups to plan, analyze data, and write assessments. We're also expected to contact parents, grade other assignments, gather resources for our lessons. And with teachers who have multiple preps and may not have a PLC group to share the load with, they also have to plan for their classes. Many teachers currently feel overwhelmed with the amount of work they already have to do during their contractual day, and adding the possible equivalent of an additional class with no extra planning time provided will have a negative impact on teachers and on teacher retention. I would like to ask that increasing class size be a last resort when all of their possible options have been exhausted and the board is left with no choice. I have some ideas I'd like to propose to alleviate the numbers in classrooms. One idea is to give students who live in, on the border of the east and south zones, the options to attend a school outside of their technical zone. In some cases, we may find these students technically live closer to a school that is not in their zone. By allowing minor shifts of students from the east zone to attend a south zone school, and allowing south zone students to attend a west zone school, this would shift some of our numbers around and perhaps fill empty seats in schools and prevent overcrowding in others. I would also like to propose the school board asks the community to levy a one-cent sales tax so the district could acquire additional funding to build or remodel schools to meet the demands of our county. Each year, the number of people vacationing to this area increases, and I believe this could be a great source of revenue for our district. If explained and publicized correctly to the community, this tax could provide more opportunities for the children of Lee County. The National Education Association actually has grants available and can help provide assistance in communicating this effectively to our community. As Talc vice president, I'm confident that Talc would be willing to assist in obtaining such help from the NEI. I thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Next speaker is Ms. Amber Richards.
Good evening. My name is Amber Richards, and I am a senior at Fort Myers High School and the president of the largest youth and government chapter in the state of Florida. I have been a delegate of Florida YMCA Youth and Government for seven years now. This is a civics engagement program that allows students to serve as part of the model government process. Every year, about 600 delegates from around the state travel to Tallahassee in late February to participate in our annual state assembly. There, students have the opportunity to participate in the legislative branch, judicial branch, press, or a part of our youth cabinet. This year, I served on the cabinet as chief of staff to our youth governor. Not only do we have a high school youth and government state assembly, but if, every April for the past eight years, in Haynes City, we have a junior youth and government assembly, open to students in grades six through eight. These middle school delegates participate in the legislative branch, writing bills that they feel passionate about and debating their ideas amongst their peers. Florida Youth and Government also provides high school students like myself the opportunity to serve as high school mentors. Mentors go with the advisor employed by the Y to middle school meetings and assist in teaching bill writing and debate procedure. We work with the delegates throughout the year and travel with them to their assembly. Last year, I had the opportunity to be a high school mentor at the middle school assembly, and that been alone really changed my life. I saw how they looked up to me for support and help and seeing how much of an impact I made on their lives really made, um, really made an impact on mine and changed my perspective and outlook on life. Every year since I joined YIG, and especially after attending the event, I have strived to be a servant leader. Just in Lee County, youth and government clubs are present in six middle schools and two high schools, and each year, we continue to grow. This year, our delegation brought 86 students to assembly. We had four presiding officers, who are officers at the state level, and 12 supporting officers who served as committee chairs, associate justices, and members of the cabinet. Throughout this year, we have had delegates speak at county, at a county commissioner meeting, the Lee County legislator meeting, and in Tallahassee, myself along with two other delegates got to speak on an actual bill in a committee. Seven years ago, I was a shy sixth grader who was deathly afraid to speak in front of any group, but because of youth and government, I am here today speaking in front of you. This wonderful program cannot continue to make these life-changing experiences without the resources it needs and needs to run effectively. So, I'm here tonight along with the FMHS incoming youth and government president Cameron Lewis and our Y advisor Sean Casey to ask the school board to support us as we grow as a program and help as we expand in new middle and high schools. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Ware. Uh, to the school board members and to Dr. Graham, I'm merely here tonight to tell you thank you for availing us the opportunity in 339-16 and 339-05 last night in your efforts to educate our parents more about the lottery process. However, it was not successful. I've discussed some ways that I thought we might better do it. However, I'm going back into the community. I have already gone back into the community, and I've asked several organizations to try to assist in better doing this next time that it comes around. But I really, really want to say to you, thank you very, very much for accommodating my request. If I could have gotten a bus and drove him in there, I would have. Thank you very kindly.
I, I'm not sure how to answer Mr. Schaefer on his consolidation of those, uh, piggyback bids. Um, and I don't know whether they are in fact independent departments that we're, we're bidding on. And if that's the case, based on usage, are the costs going to be relatively the same? But, um, if you could have somebody look at that and get back, I'd appreciate it.
Do you want, you want a response for Mr. Schaefer? And you, or, because I-
If he's able to do it now, yes.
I don't, I don't know where she went, but when Dr. Desmore gets back in, she's, she's capable of answering those questions.
Okay. And in terms of the furniture, we've been through this one many times about encouraging local bidders to be involved, but they do have criteria they need to make. So, uh, I don't see Susan here.
Yeah, they were both in here, and I don't know where they went, but if someone could-
Probably knew we were going to call on them.
We will, well, we'll get Mr. Schaefer's answers. Um, I will tell you that local vendors are encouraged.
Okay. Uh, in terms of Ms. Castellano, we had a very long conversation at the last board meeting about how we're going to face up to the, to the capital problems that we have and what were the options available, and none of them were attractive. But the most doable, most quickly, was the adding of students to the class roles. And, uh, the max, we were going to take them up with three students above what is identified as the cap at this point in time. So, I hear what you're saying, but the alternatives that were available to us are not things we could do nearly as quickly. So, we're going to end up saving about $800,000, which gets us through another year, but we've got to start now deciding how we're going to deal with things on the long haul. So, I'm sure that doesn't satisfy you, but that's the answer we came up with at the last time.
And may I just add, Mr. Scott, when we, when we looked at it, we haven't gone beyond more than three. We're still going to have caps, and we have not, we talked about the savings we could make by adding one, two, or three. So, I don't want anybody to think we're just going to fill the classes. That's never been the culture of this district. So, um, we haven't looked beyond three, and we don't know that we'll need to go to three. So, we will still have caps, I guess, is what I want to be sure everybody understands.
And Ms. Richards, I appreciate you being here tonight. We had some email correspondence. What you're talking about is a civics involvement on the part of students, and we've had that discussion up here before. I think, uh, what, what you're involved with is vitally important, and the more folks we can get involved in that, the better off we'll be. So, now that you've been here and made your presentation, I'd like to have further conversation with you, one-on-one, and then maybe we can bring something back to the board to, to hear. But, uh, congratulations for what you're doing and the students who are working with you and faculty who may be working with you on that as well. And Jerry, we were, would love to have seen a full house last night, but frankly, yours wasn't any different than most of the ones that we had seen. And I mentioned this afternoon, my own personal frustration and our ability to get parents to come and be involved and engaged in these kind of conversations. So, we've got to find a better way of getting to them. I don't know how that's going to work itself out, but it may be different based upon the communities that we're working in. So, I'll be anxious for you and your, your group to come back and give us some insight to that so that the next go-around when we need to do that kind of thing, we can be much more productive. Next on the agenda is approval of action items under consent. Board members, are there any items you wish to pull for discussion? Ms. Fisher.
None this evening.
Mrs. Dozier.
Yes, item 4A3, page 13.
Okay. Mrs. Morgan.
Uh, item 4D2, page 89.
Are you looking for another?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm done.
Mr. Hartstrom?
And I have none.
So, is there a motion to approve the agenda consent items with the exception of the two pulled?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. So, we'll go to item 4A3 on page 13. Is there a motion for the pulled item?
We need a recommendation first.
Recommendation.
She needs to read it first.
Approval of RFP number R137117JM for Strategic Branding and Marketing Consultant to Priority Marketing of Fort Myers, Florida for the period of April 2nd, 2014 through April 1st, 2015 at the estimated annual expenditure of $97,000 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Now, is there a motion?
So. So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier. Second by Ms.
Second.
Morgan. Discussion. Mrs. Dozier.
I did have a conversation with Dr. Graham on this. Um, I know that we all received an email about this particular item and the expense. And I, and, and I want to thank the person that sent the email because that does show that people are very diligent and they are looking at every expenditure. And we need to be responsible and, and give answers about this. And I did have a conversation with Dr. Graham around this topic, and I, and I feel as though the answer that she gave me was a very reasonable answer. And I will also say that this is one of those things that it was initiative, it was an initiative that was started with a previous administration, and it would be like throwing the baby out with the bathwater right now, not to continue down the journey that we've begun on. So, I'm going to ask Dr. Graham if you will kind of give us an idea of the services that we're getting and what you see in the future as far as the, the financial commitment that we have.
I'll start by saying that 72,000 of this is actually for district use. The other, and the other's district use as well. But the other 25,000 is if schools should decide they want to take advantage of this firm, they can do that within this contract, but the dollars would come from their, their own funds. So, 25,000 of it would come from schools who chose to use them. So, we may or may not use the full amount. Basically, what's, what's going on, Priority Marketing was brought in, my understanding, was to rebrand the school district. And, um, when I got here, it was determined we weren't ready to be rebranded. And, but we already had a contract with them, and we didn't want to throw that away. Obviously, they were going to get paid whether we used them or not. So, they have been a resource for multiple projects. Uh, we have one graphic designer. And one of the things we did, um, starting last summer, we've encouraged schools to come back to the print shop and use it rather than, rather than outsource that work. In doing so, we have a lot of schools, we have one graphic designer. And so, Priority has stepped in, and they've provided a tremendous amount of graphic support, for one thing. They, um, have also worked, they're working right now with hiring the Lee County Way. They are, they were instrumental in redoing our- They were instrumental in redoing our student assignment materials. Our communications department, which this falls under, when you figure out hourly what everybody in that department does, they need 15 more hours a week. So I'm not sure how they do it, but that's what they do. So if you quantify their time. So we have used them in multiple ways and will continue to do so. The value is that we have a resource of an entire firm of people who have very specific skills. If we were to hire one or even two individuals, first of all, we would need certain expertise. Our salary structure is not competitive with the market in the areas that Priority provides. So that's why we're going this route. To say how long, I've told you, I really want to work on salaries, and if we can get to the point that we can become somewhat competitive, then we can begin to look for people with the expertise and hire them. And we will review this. It is not in Ms. Chandler's mind or my mind that this will be forever, but it is filling a very, very large need right now. And we are, without calling it rebranding, we are reinventing the visual story about our district and Priority's helping us do that with the expertise that they have.
If I can continue. I will be supporting this this evening because this is, like I said, anything else, this is an initiative that we have started on, and to not support it now, it would be like throwing the baby out with the bathwater, and I don't think that's good business sense. So I will support her, and Dr. Graham has assured me that she is going to be watching this expenditure to make sure that we are getting, you know, what we're paying for and that we couldn't do it in-house. So thank you for that, and I'll be supporting it.
May I add one other thing? One of the concerns in the memo was that there was no benefit to students and schools. And I will tell you that there have been at least two under-selected schools that have taken advantage of the expertise that we've been able to provide through Priority Marketing. And it became really, really valuable during the choice open houses, that they were able to have people that could help them. How to... Literally new principals saying, "How do I market my school? Nobody knows I'm here," or "Our reputation isn't what we want it to be." So there has been a clear benefit to schools. I forgot to mention that.
Ms. Morgan?
I noticed that it's a three-year contract with a renewal option for two additional one-year periods. I would prefer to see this treated as a pilot. Three years is a reasonable amount of time to do a pilot. I would like to see this revisited at the board level before we are presented in the consent agenda with an automatic rollover in April 16. So I'm just putting that on.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I can tell you in our thinking, that's been it. We wouldn't do another year without talking to you.
And I certainly think that that is a very fair request, and I can support that.
Other comments? Questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. The motion carries five to zero. Please report on the second item, which is 4D2, page 89.
Well, I have lost my agenda. Approval of the contract with Progressive Bridges, Inc. to provide PBIS training and support for Manatee Elementary, Colonial Elementary, Fort Myers Middle Academy, and James Stevens International Academy in the amount of $30,000. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Is there a motion for the item?
So moved.
Support.
Second.
Ms. Morgan, second by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? Mrs. Morgan?
I'm the one who pulled this. And this is the broken record, Morgan. Again, we are approving a contract without an outcome. And in looking at the consulting proposal for spring semester 2014, what we have is a process. We are guaranteed a process. What we don't know is whether the process is effective. Again, we have no measurable outcome that we have established so that we can ascertain whether or not this investment yields an appropriate return for students and for the district.
I did receive some data on Progressive Bridges this afternoon in anticipation of that. Unfortunately, I didn't get it to you all before I got it here. We are seeing... The whole goal of this is that we are trying, much of what's happening, these are four DA schools. Much of what's happening is about losing instructional time is a result of behavior that needs to be replaced. Negative behavior that needs to be replaced with positive behavior. And that's why the focus on these schools. I can tell you that at one of the schools, the office referrals between October and February dropped 23%. At another school, they dropped 51%, another 13%, and another 54%. That's just between October and February. We're looking specifically at insubordination and disrespect. Also, we're looking at how many students sit in ISS. Again, the numbers are anywhere from 47% to 24% change in the timeframe that we've been using PBIS. And then OSS, in one school, this is amazing to me, 71% reduction in out-of-school suspension. A 200% out-of-school suspension reduction in another school, and a total of a 39% change in the OSS when all is said and done. So we believe it's working, and we will continue to share this anytime you want to see it. But the data is there to show that we are seeing significant difference in four months of using PBIS. Our goal, honestly, this summer, we're going to provide training to all schools because we... I know it works because I used it in my own school, but we're going to push this out to the entire district without Progressive Bridges because it can be done. These are really severe cases. That's why we're going with this.
So I will say thank you, but I also would really appreciate going forward, having that information before I come into the meeting.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Dozier?
Well, what I was going to say is, I know when I was in administration, and I'm not going to say how many years ago, but I know at that time, we had a very archaic technology system. And at that time, we were able to report on things such as how many referrals were written in a given quarter, how many teachers wrote each referral. I mean, it was a breakdown. And I think one of the things that would help us, for instance, the information that you just gave us, that's a statistic...
Right.
...that helps us to see that, okay, this program is working in these schools. And I think that when we're asking for reports and data on all of these programs, and stop me, you know, kick me if I'm wrong, but I'm not asking or expecting a great, huge, formal report. I simply want some data that is showing me that this program is working and it's worth our... We're getting our bang for our buck, and we need to continue the program. So for me, what you just told us, that basically is giving me the statistics that I need to know, that when you talk about, you know, referrals have dropped 14% in the schools that are listed here, I mean, that is significant. I mean, that is, you know, that's tremendous.
And I would just simply ask, and, you know, if that's not the type of report that you're asking for, I, you know... But I think that little reports like that, you know, and obviously, these three schools, the schools need to know that that's our expectation. And, you know, I know that this staff down here is taxed to the max. And so it's not that we're asking people to do additional tasks, but instead, you know, if you've got a program and you know that it's working, you've already got the data there, you know, print it out, use it, shoot it down here, you know, share it with us so we can say, oh, great, that is... You know, we're getting our money's worth there, so. Well, I want to apologize you all didn't have this. It got sent to me mid-morning, and honestly, I did not sit at my desk until about 3:30 this afternoon. So I apologize you didn't get it. But it is here, and I'll see that you have it before I leave tonight.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah. We've been using positive behavior support in this district for many years. So is there not, you know, a spreadsheet with that data that we can look at ongoing? Is that available in the superintendent's office? I know we've had presentations at our briefings on the positive behavior support program.
A lot of the schools...
Go ahead.
A lot of the schools that used to use it, they're not using it anymore. In fact, I know of a couple of high schools that used to have it, and they used it. They had their, you know, PBS teams and all that. They're not using it anymore. You know, and a lot of those schools that didn't have the discipline problems that this particular group of schools had, they just saw it as maybe something that they didn't have to continue doing, or it wasn't some... It was one of those things that they saw that they could get rid of. And because I know I heard this from several teachers at the beginning of the year.
Right. And that's right where I was going with this, because we have spent dollars having trainers come in. I had the opportunity many years ago to participate in a summer training with representatives from several schools. And so that was what I was getting at when I said ongoing, was how is that working across the district? And when we institute or we adopt a program like this and approve it and spend the money on the training, you know, people move. Teachers change schools. Administration changes, and then there's a different philosophy. And how are we tracking that? Like, what happens when this school becomes a PBS school? Then is the expectation that it's always a PBS school? Or is it just up to the next principal that comes along and says, "Well, even though we have data that shows that it does work." So I don't know how... Your original question was two parts. One was, do we have a spreadsheet or data? And the other is, is everybody using it and what happened? Right. I'm unable to answer what happened, but I can tell you that we are going... We've already talked about it, and other school execs have talked to schools. PBS needs to be a district-wide effort. It's just the logical way to do it. You reward children for doing the right thing, and then you don't need so many consequences because they choose to do the right thing rather than the wrong thing. So we are working to that end, and again, it is going to be part of our summer leadership training. As far as the data, I will tell you that probably one of Mrs. Coos' biggest frustrations, and it's becoming one of mine pretty quickly, we are having a hard time getting what we believe is data that should be simple to just gather. And we... I think we have the technology, and I think we have the expertise among our staff. I'm just unsure that it's ever been expected that it would be in formats that would be easy to grasp. So we are grabbed. So we are... We're working to that end. Just to get this chart took way more time than it should have because the data is there. We just have to figure out... And that's about us figuring out a way to have a user-friendly data warehouse, basically. So we know that. That's on our radar, something we've got to work towards. So when the data is easy to grab, we'll let you know. In the meantime, we'll just be sure you get this. Probably, maybe each semester would be a good timeframe for you to see, because then you see real progress.
Well, I have another question that goes right along with that. Most of... It's my understanding that most of the schools who have been using PBS, that's paid for with Title I or grant money. I mean, and you have to report out when you're using money within the confines of a grant, so.
There are many schools using PBS.
Yes.
Not all schools are using it.
Right.
I will tell you that if it's part of the Title I grant, those schools are using it. We're not violating any grant dollars, but we have a lot of schools that aren't Title I. And I'll tell you, it's a tough sell at the high school level because some people aren't convinced that kids will respond. I'm going to brag just for a second. I was the first gold school in the state as a high school for PBS. It works. It works at every level, and we just need to... We just need to get people to become believers.
Well, yeah. We need to adopt that philosophy.
But it is not... It's not district-wide. Yeah. We're going to get there.
And make it a part of the culture, and of course, it'll work at high school.
And it's...
And we won't need it so much at high school once.
And it is a quality element, so I think it'll all come.
Thank you.
It'll come.
I just think the simpler the information you provide, the better it is for us as decision-makers. I don't care to have it at the doctorate level. I care to have it at the... I don't want to insult anybody, the bricklayer level, where we really know what we're looking at and we can make decisions.
This is a really simple chart.
I had this conversation a couple of times earlier today with people, and it is the nature of the folks that we have working, particularly in this building, that they communicate on a level that is beyond the capacity of many folks. And Jerry and I had this conversation briefly last night, who even read our webpage. They don't understand some of the words, which may be very comfortable for a lot of people, but it's not for everybody. And this production of data to minute details, I don't think is what we're really needing. We're needing something like you just gave us. Okay? Sounds good to me. I'm in favor. We haven't voted yet, but that's the important part. Can we get that information so we know things are moving in the right direction? Okay? Any further discussion? All in favor signify... Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Dozier.
That would be something that would be very appropriate to have at a briefing meeting for us to go through, you know, just this is on the agenda tonight, and this is the statistic, blah, blah, blah. You know, you might choose four, five, or six, or a board member might tell you something that they see.
Sorry.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a like sign. The motion carries five to zero. We'll now move to superintendent recommendations. Item 6B.
If I might, before that, because I forgot last time, I don't want to forget again, I'd like to introduce our newest administrative personnel that you all just approved in the consent agenda, so they don't go home saying, "I thought she was going to introduce me." First is Matthew Bredenkamp. Where's Matt? There he is. He's becoming an assistant principal at Astero High. My understanding is Matt was with us at one time and has returned from the north to be with us again. Very, very good winner to make that decision. And then Jennifer Salak was a reading coach at Astero High, has been a reading coach, and she's a huge Twitter follower, and she is also going to be an assistant principal at Astero High. So welcome to the world of administration. Over, thank you for coming with them and making it look so good they're willing to do it. Okay. I recommend board approval of the resolution declaring the trees as surplus and approve district staff to hold an auction in the near future for the removal, sale of the trees. And this refers to some trees that we have on district land that we need to deem unnecessary for school educational purposes.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morgan, second by Ms. Fisher. Discussion?
I hate to cut down a tree.
Yeah, so do I.
Are they going to be removed by cutting, or are they going to be dug out?
We hope to have an auction and sell them.
Oh, right.
Is the plan, correct, Dr. Atkins? Yes. The first thing we had to do was deem them unnecessary for educational purposes. And some of them, we will keep for our own... We're using them some in our landscaping, but there's 114 acres, which I think was one of your questions. And we will never use all those trees.
Okay.
Right.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Dr. Graham, we'll move now to public hearings, and would you please present your recommendations for this evening's public hearings?
I recommend board approval of the contract with City of Palms Charter High School, Inc. for grades nine through 12, school designed to serve at risk students, to be called Palmakers Charter High School. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute related documents.
Want to do the second one?
Yes. I recommend board approval of the contract with Acceleration Education Services, Inc. for a grade 6/8 school designed to serve at risk students, to be called Acceleration Middle Charter School. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute related documents.
At this time, we'll recess the regular school board meeting and open the public hearing. As indicated, the public hearing this evening is to consider a contract for charter school with City of Palms Charter High School Incorporated and a contract for charter school with Acceleration Education Services Incorporated. At this time, the public is invited to speak on these two items only. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right who wishes to speak? On the left. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask Dr. Graham to read once again your recommendation.
Approval of the contract with City of Palms Charter High School, Inc. for a grades 9/12 school designed to serve at risk students, to be called Palmakers Charter High School. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute related documents.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, support by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? Motion by Ms. Dozier, support by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alike sign. The motion carries five to zero. The second, please.
Approval of the contract with Acceleration Education Services, Inc. for a grade 68 school designed to serve at risk students, to be called Acceleration Middle Charter School. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute related documents.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier.
Support.
Second by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alike sign. The motion carries five to zero. We'll now move to board member comments. And I'll start with Mr. Armstrong.
I'll keep this quick and very brief. First, Ms. Castillon, I understand your concern because I sat up here myself with the same concerns you did. I'm not really in favor of increasing the class size. I'm worried that it could hurt the students. But on the same token, you brought up the sales tax. And I continue to ask this same question again and again. You bring it to the taxpayers as a referendum. They turn it down. I've watched them do it again and again with different things. What do we do then? I've yet to get a contingency plan of how we're going to look long-term, of how it's gonna help. The, increasing the students right now is a short-term plan, and I don't think it's gonna work. And I think it could hurt the students in the long-term. So I'm, I'm open for any other ideas, because right now I don't think the sales tax is gonna pass either. The other thing I did want to discuss a little bit about is, Sunday I had the opportunity to go to the Southwest Florida Fair and look at all of the presentations in the booths that are students and are schools. I actually got to sit there with, for the presentation and their awards. And I couldn't be more proud of some of these schools, what they've done. They've done some really outstanding, and I mean remarkable work on some of these booths. But there was something that was very disappointing, as I'm standing up there on stage. As I noticed out in the crowd, I didn't see a lot of parents. And it's almost disappointing, because as Mr. Scott was talking about earlier, in student assignment, there wasn't a lot of parents that showed up. We have got to come up with a way to reach out to these parents and get them to get involved. Some parents just don't want to be involved. And some of it has to do with something Mr. Scott was just saying. That, you know, we, we use all these terminologies. And we have to learn to tone it down a little. Because you're going to, these parents don't want to come here. They don't understand what's going on. They want it in plain English. And I think until we start toning it down and basically feeling more welcomed, we're not gonna get the attendance that we want. And it's disheartening, because some of these parents really do want to be involved in their kid's education. They just don't know how. And when they do try, sometimes they get a little nervous or scared. So I think that's something this board, this district, we all need to work on and come up with ways that we can get better parent participation. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
First of all, welcome Austin Young. We had some correspondence a year ago. And if somebody had asked me about him, I would have said that I was communicating by email with, with someone who had a future in public policy. So I was pleased to see that that's, he feels the same way himself. He is a very, very articulate writer and advocate. And welcome again. Nice to see you here. Two Saturdays ago, I went to see Odyssey of the Mind at Riverdale High School. And I gotta tell you, that is some awesome event. It's done by levels. There are five problems that students can solve. They work either with coaches after school in clubs, or in some cases in the classrooms. It's all about critical thinking, creative problem solving. They, there is, there are elementary schools building cars and, and running racetracks with, with, with $100 worth of materials. It is, it is really something to see. And everybody solves the problem a different way. And, but they all solve the problem. But one thing was brought to my attention that I would like to bring to the superintendent's attention. And that is that we, we need to do a better job scheduling some of these events. Because there was a STEM event, apparently the same Saturday as the Odyssey of the Mind event. And essentially, students are having to choose between the kinds of activities that they get to participate in. And so the question asked of me was, can we sort of have a district calendar so that going forward, various community groups and school groups who are planning events can schedule around one another so, so students aren't excluded from.
Were they both our events?
Well, Odyssey of the Mind is, is done by an independent nonprofit. But they run it apparently the first Saturday of every March. And then there was a district event scheduled on top of that. So given that a lot of our students participate, and some actually do it as a classroom exercise, I think it's worth our while to look at, look at that a little bit further. Also got to go to the Take Stock in Children luncheon. Forty-six college scholarships given out to middle schoolers and high schoolers this year. What an awesome event. This is the foundation, I believe, working in concert with, is it the state? Yeah. And these students are recognized for what they have done in the past. But they're basically told there are goals that you have to meet going forward. And they're appointed mentors, and the mentors work with them to help them stay on track. It was, it was just really exciting to see these kids. Let's see. Mrs. Dozier mentioned the earlier meeting about my doing the legislative comments. First of all, financial literacy is unlikely to get anywhere. So that's what happens in a week. It seems to be off the map. Board expansion has been filed and referred to committee. That looks good. Capital outlay, and I'm doing these by the five areas that we've identified as the most important legislative initiatives. There are four bills out there dealing with an increase in local millage discretionary. There are companion bills in the House and Senate to fund PICO using utility gross tax receipts, using the utility gross, utility gross receipts tax. Mr. Sarah's estimation was, we were looking at conceivably 400 million out of that. It would have to be spread K-12, I mean, K-20. So not, not much for us on the bottom line. But nevertheless, an effort on the legislators' part to figure out a way to generate some more money for us. I'm gonna let you handle, Dr. Graham, the accountability piece. Dual enrollment, not much there. There is an effort to fix the FTE, student value, per the FSBA recommendation. And, and then another proposal that'll exempt fee requirements for homeschool and private schools in the dual enrollment program. Go figure. Charter schools, a couple of troubling things, but as Ms. Dozier said earlier this afternoon, who knows what will move forward. A proposal that charter school contracts flow from negotiated applications. So in other words, no district review of the application. Unused classrooms for use by charter schools. Out-of-state, high-performing charters get to come in with out-of-state, high-performing status without any demonstrated experience in the state. So that's my legislative report thus far. Ms. Dozier, do you have anything to add to that? No? Okay. And now I, I come to this memo that I sent to you all, my three-page whatever. I'm beginning to understand that my communication skills aren't that great because I keep saying the same thing over, but it's not, my message isn't getting across. And in talking to Dr. Graham yesterday, I realized what the problem is. I keep talking about data. We are data-rich. We don't need data. What we need is analysis. And in this memo, that's what I'm trying to drive at. For example, eighth-grade achievement in math is the greatest predictor of college and career readiness. Forty-four percent of our students are unable to meet the standard in eighth-grade math. Why is that? Where is that? Is that in schools? Is that in demographic groups? Is it in curriculum? Where, you know, where is that coming from? And that's the kind of analysis that I'm looking for. And that's the kind of analysis I would like to see as we go into strategic planning. Algebra, one, 37% of the kids don't, don't meet the standard. What are the barriers? Why aren't a third of our students passing? So I make some recommendations for the purpose of examining the impact of strategies to reach academic achievement goals. We need to be looking at data by cohort, annual measurable, annual measurable objectives, comparable districts throughout the state, three-year trends in comparables, math, writing. Three-year trends for specific, for disaggregated data by demographic group. Girls in STEM, minorities in STEM, lower-income in STEM. I mean, these are the kinds of things that I think we should be looking at before we go into the strategic planning process. And I'm asking you, as a board tonight, I'm asking you to support me in asking the superintendent to do a briefing on some of this data in April or May before we go into the strategic planning process or into developing goals for the superintendent for the coming school year.
And I will certainly, I mean, I read your memo. I saw what you were asking for. And, you know, like the one with the students, I think it was the, let's see, the other, in fact, I was reading it, the reading in the math. I mean, that is very troubling, those scores, you know. And, and we do need to look at that when we, when we are looking at our strategic plan. We need to look at that because you see the areas where your dollars need to be driven. And I agree with you. And when we just talked about, you know, like these statistics right here are right out there. And we need to look at this at, at briefing meetings so that we can, and it's stuff that we talk about all the time, but we don't do it formally. And we don't each have the opportunity to interact. So I, I mean, I think, I think that that's something that we could, it's very manageable, very easy for us to do at a future briefing meeting.
Part of the discussion I had with Mrs. Morgan yesterday, because we, we finally, I was hearing what she was saying, finally. What, what you're asking for, we do. It's how we make our decisions. And if, if you all need to, I, I don't think you want everything that we work with. I, I think, we don't even want everything we work with some of the time. But I, I can tell you that we will, we, we can do what you're asking. If you want a briefing on it, we can certainly do that. I just need to know the will of the board.
For instance, you know, obviously, when only 38% of our students are, well, are not satisfactory in reading at the fourth-grade level. You know, that's something that we can have a conversation around that. What are we gonna do about that? What are some programs that are in place that are, that are targeting that group of students to try to improve them academically? I think it could be a very simple conversation, just like the simple statistics that you gave us earlier.
And I will say that when the grades came out, we, we did share some of that information. And maybe that was just, it was a very busy time. I had just gotten here. But we got, we've nothing to hide, and it's all available. And everything we do is, decisions that we make, data we look at, we look at the demographic. We have to look at the demographic. The, the state requires that you look at subgroups. Much of the school grade is based on the subgroup. So everything you're asking for is available, and we do it. I just need to know. You know, I get confused about briefings because I, I understand, now that we're doing workshops, we only have one briefing a month. And I get the sense sometimes we don't want the briefings to be as long as the time that's allocated. So I, I just need some sense of where you want to go. I'll give you whatever date you want, if that's the will of the board.
Edit?
Yes, those are my comments. I'm just waiting to hear what you all. Oh. Should I? I don't know.
Well, she's asking for a response to her memo.
Okay. In simple language, Dr. Graham just said the word demographics. I'm gonna say the word variables, and I'm gonna say the word bell curve. And I'm gonna say that when we're expecting people who have different demographics, different ability levels, different development, or different developmental stages, speak other languages, when we're asking for, to lump all of those kids and have them all doing the same thing at the same time in the same way, if we compared that to looking out into the public, I don't know how that really ever can happen. So what are we doing about it is, I think our teachers are working extremely hard. And our other staff members are working extremely hard to try to move people to a certain level. But my question is, is that realistic for every student in Lee County? Do you know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying, but I.
So, I mean, and.
Sure, I understand how it responds.
So the way we're measuring, and oftentimes we're comparing apples and oranges. But I certainly, you know, want to continue to support our, our teaching and support staff people who do everything from pick the kids up at their house and get them to school to trying to impart the lessons and the skills that are gonna bring them to academic success and achievement. But I think if you have somebody, if we wanted to go to California, and somebody was in New York and someone was in Chicago, the person who's in Chicago is gonna get there sooner. You know, assuming they were taking the same mode of transportation. So I really think that we have to try to look more deeply at that when we collect the data and disaggregate it so that we can explain that. Why is that percentage so high? You know, why are, what did you say that was, of 47% of fourth graders are not reading up to?
Thirty-eight percent, I think.
Or 38?
Well, I think, I think, Ms. Fisher, part of the question is, do you want a briefing on the, do you want us to drill it down further and do a briefing and share that kind of information?
Yes. I support that. Yes.
I'd like to know, yes. And I'd like to know where the problems are, where the deficiencies are. And then a very brief profile on that deficient performance center. Because that will start pointing some signals to us. And I, throw percentages, decimal point, I don't care what you put. I want to know how far off we are from what the standard should be. And then we can look at the, what are some of the underlying reasons for it? You know, our mission says to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential. That personal potential is not identical for everybody. And until we come to grips with that, we're, we're trying to slam everybody against the same standard. And it may not be a possibility. So we've got to, you know, I asked a question a while back about dyslexia. And where do we test for that? Well, I, I didn't get an answer because I guess there isn't a place to test for that. The only way we know is if somebody doesn't perform. And we can backtrack and find out, well, shoot, they're, they're not seeing things the way everybody else sees them. And that's gotta impact them. A, a lot of those things are out there. And unless we personalize this, to some extent, we're never gonna accomplish the mission, which is to treat them as individuals. You got 86,000 students now. We'll have 90,000 before you know it. Then it'll be 100,000. It doesn't get any easier. It gets harder. But if we can focus on where the problems are and have a profile of that population, and then go deeper, I think we'll be all better off.
And just remember, and this will come up when we do the briefing, we've said since I got here, this is why we talk about gains versus those raw percentages. Because in that 48%, there are children who are making amazing progress. It's just they're making progress at a different rate of success than the state requires.
The trends show that and will show that.
Yes.
And when you look at the different schools, you will see where the pockets are that, that we can actually target. That, you know, we need to put more resources over here because these, you know, obviously have a population that need additional help or more time on task. So, and I think those are, those are things that, that can help us. So, and I think those are, those are things that, that can help us to make some budgetary decisions as well.
I agree with you. I believe this is going to help the board in making some of those tough decisions. If we start looking at it, you know, and I've looked at these same statistics again and again and again, until we start isolating where the issues are and where we need to put our resources, we'll continue with the small gains. And I think it's, you know, not only would I like to see it be briefed, but maybe down the road, a workshop on it, to see where we're at, what programs we're going to bring in, and how we're going to bring these students to the next level. You know, we keep talking about being a world-class school system. Well, that's part of it, to reach that, that plateau, for lack of better words, and challenge these students to be the best they can be, and above and beyond. So yes, I do agree with you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. And that's it for my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Dozier.
Well, Austin, I'd like to welcome you to the table. And, boy, what an impressive resume. You know, all of these students so far that we've had, y'all just continue to impress us more and more. And, and your goals, all of you, you know, have goals, goals that you, you know, want to achieve, and, and probably you've got exactly written out how you're going to do that, and the fact that you already know where you're going to college. And, I mean, you, you are ninety percent there. So welcome to the table, and I look forward to that, that extensive report that you're going to give later. I'm kidding. I know that all of you have been visiting schools, and I'm not going to talk about all the different schools, but I am going to talk about a couple of things that I've noticed at our schools. This afternoon in the briefing, we talked about the fact that with some of our schools, you know, students are taught certain skills of how to, you know, workforce. Students are taught how to go out and have an interview, how to dress for the interview. Well, as low, the grades as low as second grade, they are teach, also teaching students, a lot of students don't know how to introduce themselves. And I went to a, to a second grade class the other day, and the teacher had every student stand up when I got ready to leave, and she told every student, you know, shake Mrs. Dozier's hand, look her in the eye, thank her for being here. And, you know, she asked me, do you have time to do this? I said, absolutely. And it was, you know, it was, it was a very small thing, but it was something that was very powerful for every one of those students. Because, you know, a lot of students are not being taught the skills, and it's because, you know, it, it's not because they're being slighted, the parents are trying to slight their children, it's because, you know, the parents are busy doing other things. I'm going to keep defending a lot of the parents, because if you're sitting there and you're trying to, to put food on the table and you're working three jobs, you know, volunteering is the last thing that you're going to look at. So, you know, but if you've got a minute, you know, come into the school and volunteer. Construction advisory, Ms. Castellano, I heard you loud and clear, and believe me, I have been the, the person who has stood and been on a soapbox about the school class size amendment. Because I said, you know, it passed, it's part of the law, we, you know, we, we've got to, we've got to do it. However, there comes a time when you have to look at, you have to look at your budget, and you have to make the best decisions in the best interest of the whole organization. And it was, it was a very lofty conversation that we had here, and it was not the most pleasant conversation that we've ever had either. Because it was a decision that was very hard for all of us to make. And this is just a one-year deal. I don't know if you know that, but it's a one-year deal until we can look at other things. But I want to go into another part of my report and talk about, I, I had my construction advisory committee for the second month in a row, and they talked about what your suggestion was, would you go out for a sales tax? I'm going to tell you, these are our advisory committees that are our friends, they're the people that, if we want to, want to get the business community behind us, these are the people that we do that. They are totally opposed to a, a, any type of, of a referendum right now. They don't believe that that's the way to go with the community. And there are certain things that they're asking for, and, and I said, okay, I'll be glad to do that, you know. And there are certain things that they're asking for. There's parts of the system that, like, you know, it's easy to say, go back to, go back to neighborhood schools, your, your transportation costs are too high. And then when you start talking about why you have the program that you have and what it would cost to go back, and one of the things that I told them that I would bring to them, they ask about the IB programs, why not put them in every high school? And I, I told them that there was a cost factor that was involved. But, but, you know, when we make these decisions, we never make a decision to try to hurt teachers, we never make a decision to try to hurt students. And believe me, that probably gave every one of us at this table indigestion when we had to make that decision. As Mr. Scott said, it's a, it's a, it's a decision that we made that is the quickest solution right now, and it's really in the best interest of the students because we have a plan. If the others, we've got to have a backup plan anyway. If we go out for a referendum, if, if it doesn't work, what are we going to do? If, you know, if it gets voted down? And I'm out in the community, and I, I just throw it out there, how many of you, if the school district was to put a referendum on the ballot, how many of you would support us for that? And that's after I tell them, how many students we have that are on free and reduced lunch, that's how many, you know, buildings we have, and how many employees we have, and what our transportation costs are. And, you know, after you tell them all of that, and you don't get the support from it, then you have to look at other ways to do this. And so we're going to be looking hard at that for the next, you know, for the next year, anyway. I had an opportunity to attend with Representative Fitzhagen, and also Ms. Fisher was there, an anti-bullying event. There was a lot of turnout. In fact, all, I think they brought in two buses from the Marine Institute, and we were both asked to talk a little bit about bullying, and we did that. I also attended the regional Senator Bennett Quistos legislative luncheon, which was very informative, and it was right before the session, basically talking about the things that were going to happen. And since that time, I, I think I said at the last meeting that, that Ms. Morgan and I both have agreed that we are going to, to swap out and have a calendar of doing legislative calls. I'll do it one Monday, she'll do it the next Monday, and so forth. It's going to go back and forth, and then, then we will report and kind of do a tag-team thing here at the table. I want to also thank all of the schools out there that participated in the fair and put together a booth. I know that, that we have choice, and I know that you need every venue possible to be able to celebrate and show off the successes that go on at your schools. I know it's one more thing that you have to do, but I appreciate the fact that over a hundred schools this year chose to participate. And I want to thank those individuals that were involved in the judging. And, you know, I, I've heard from a lot of the teachers, I've heard from a lot of the people that participated, they said, you know, maybe we need to look at it a different way, if, you know, because it's costly to do that booth. Anyway, that's something that I'm going to be doing, and I'll report on that later. I, I, I want to say, you know, the accreditation team was here last week, and we, we've got a report that we will be reaccredited. I look forward to the report coming out in June. I had two attended the Take Stock Children, and to hear and to see the students that were there receive that certificate that says they have to do certain things. And they, they each had to sign their name. In other words, they had to sign like a contract. And in that contract, they were saying, I'm going to be in school, I'm going to graduate from an accredited high school in Lee County, I'm not going to get referrals, I'm going to get good grades. There's a list of things that they have to do. And if they achieve all of those, they have to meet with their mentor every other week. And if they do all those things, then they get a full ride scholarship. I mean, forty-six students, that's pretty powerful. And, and like the executive director, Mr. Bar, Mr. Marshall said, you know, Mr. Bauer, excuse me, I call him Marshall. It, you know, it would be, it would be great if we could give, you know, all of the students that, that were recommended a scholarship, but unfortunately, we don't have those dollars. But, but more and more, every day, more people are contributing, and, and folks, I'm going to do a plug here, if you'd like to contribute to Take Stock and Children, if there's a philanthropist out there that would like to write a big check, please feel free to do that. Contact Mr. Marshall Bauer with the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, and he will gladly take your check off your hands. And it will be tax deductible as well. Also, the last thing I'm going to say is, Ms. Morgan and I will be traveling to Tallahassee. We will be trooping up and down the halls of the Capitol. We will be advocating for the students, the teachers, and all of the administrators and everybody in Lee County. We will try to bring home as much money as we possibly can. And thank you very much. That's it?
Fisher.
Yes, bring that money home, we need it.
As much as we can.
And I don't want to be redundant, but I do want to thank Austin. Thank you for being willing to step forward and volunteer your time to participate with us on this board for two times. We really appreciate that. The next thing I want to say is that at this Take Stock luncheon, a mentor and a student who had been together for several years stood up and talked, and it was quite poignant. Following that event, I had an opportunity to attend a mentor's breakfast at Skyline Elementary. And they have, that school currently has fifty mentors. I think the key component for a lot of kids who do have those busy parents and who do have some challenges in, in, you know, making it up to the bar, really can be helped by one significant adult in their life, and that is the mentors. They do an amazing job, and I want to thank them. And I also want to encourage everyone out there to consider taking part in being a mentor. You can do it for an hour a week, but make a big difference in the life of a child. Great displays at the fair, and I don't want to be redundant, and I was very happy to go along with Mrs. Dozier to the press conference that Representative Heather Fitzhagen introduced her bullying bill, her anti-bullying bill, and she wants to make bullying in schools potentially a felony. So that's a strong bill. I don't know how far it'll get, but I, we certainly want to thank our schools who are taking another approach. And as we walk through the halls, we can see the posters, we can see the kids, you know, working together at lunch. And I wanted to comment on a teacher in Naples who made it on the Today Show, because she had given out cards asking her kids who they would most like to sit with, and they, she did that like on a weekly basis. And that was the way she identified kids who nobody ever wanted to sit with, and then she arranged for someone who would, you know, volunteer to do that, and really got a wonderful atmosphere and collaboration in her classroom, and created a family, and had everyone included. Because everyone has to be included, everyone has to be welcome in our classrooms, and kids need that, because when they have that, then they are going to succeed better. Let's see, Drug House Odyssey, I was there this morning from eight AM till eleven. We expect that about four thousand of our students will be going through the Drug House Odyssey. This is the twenty-second year for, for it. And we want to thank Cape Christian Fellowship on behalf of the Coalition for a Drug-Free Southwest Florida for giving their beautiful grounds and building for that. And we hope that the message that gets to the kids is a profound one. The public service people, the policemen, the sheriff's department, the firemen, the emergency medical people, all respond, and we even had the helicopter this morning. It is open to the public tomorrow evening between six and nine, so I do encourage you, if you've never been, to attend that. And my last thing is, in having an opportunity to visit some schools the last couple of weeks, doing some reading across America, I did notice something with the younger kids. When we talked before about active listening and critical thinking, well, I saw active listening. I saw that critical thinking going on, even with the kindergartners in first grades, they were making predictions, and they were solving problems. And one story that I read by Dr. Seuss, which was, if I ran the zoo, well, it starts out with a little boy standing in front of the zoo, daydreaming about what he would do if he ran the zoo. And then, of course, it ends up that way. So when we came to the end of the story, a little first grader said, well, that was a circular story. He ended up right back where he started, and that whole thing was his imagination. And I'm like, yeah. So we are doing, our teachers are doing a great job, and kids are making progress. For some kids, you know, it's great progress, even if it isn't up to the state standard. So we don't want to ever miss that point, that wonderful things are happening in our schools, and that our staff people are doing a great job. And I'll close with a quote in honor of Dr. Seuss's one-hundred-and-tenth birthday. "You have brains in your head, you have feet in your shoes, you can stare yourself in any direction you choose." Thank you.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. We had a lot of discussion about data today on the board, and I completely agree that the analyzation of all the quantitative data that this school district receives is really important, and I'm, I was happy to hear the way that that conversation went. But however, I'd urge you not to ignore the non-numerical qualitative data, like the anecdote that Ms. Frazier gave about the second graders learning to introduce themselves, or Ms. Fisher about Dr. Seuss. Because these kind of interactions impact students' lives, and they're never going to be available in a spreadsheet. And as much as we need to definitely, when we get quantitative data, try to make sense of that, because really what we're doing is trying to turn that into some kind of qualitative data, because that's what we understand, we also need to recognize that we're going to get a lot of qualitative data that might not show up in the newspaper, in the graphs that they have, but they're, they're so important, and it's great that we bring that up on the board. Also, I know you guys would love to hear another person talk about class sizes, but as a student, large class sizes are a problem. In a large class, discipline is so much harder, and in a small classes, get more, get way more done. I know it was tough to make those decisions, you guys have a lot of budget issues to take care of, and I'm glad that it's just a one-year thing. But I thank you for understanding, basically, because I can see that everybody here understands that that is a lot of stress on both the teachers, administrators, and everybody in the school. As far as my school, at Astero High School, we have some really great things going on. Tomorrow, in the Cambridge ACE program, we're putting on a short class scheduling forum to help the underclassmen currently selecting ACE classes for next year. We did a class scheduling question and answer by the upperclassmen. And we're all proud of our baseball team, which made it to the state championships last year, and is currently, according to Twitter, undefeated in the regular season. And we're also proud to say that our upcoming student government elections are going to feature a real voters registration drive for the seniors and preregistration for some sophomores and juniors to vote in national elections and school board elections. And I'd also like to say thank you to Superintendent Graham and to the whole school board for establishing the student, the student advisory board that I sit on throughout the year, and allowing me to join you here tonight. It's one thing to watch on TV or to sit in the classroom and actually be living with and affected by the policy, but it's quite another to actually engage with the people in charge of the policy. And I've learned a lot with my time on the student advisory meetings with Dr. Graham and Dr. Spiro, and I certainly have learned a lot tonight. So thank you very much, and I look forward to April first.
Thank you.
That's why I laid our policy.
Well, last Wednesday, I was able to go to the Dunbar Career Fair, which was a great event. The colleges and the services were there from all over the place. I even saw a table from Michigan State, and I guess they drove all night to get here. But that, that was a great event. Golden Apple Reception was on Friday evening, that's when the candidates for Golden Apple recipients were together, along with those who have been prior winners, and it was a chance for, and Mrs. Morgan was there as well. The food was great. And of course, on Sunday, we had dinner with the advanced ed team that was here to do the accreditation, and we met with them on Wednesday for a summary workshop. The auditorium was full, and they were, that was a command performance, I think, to have the auditorium full. But it was good for everybody to hear directly, at least the initial results that they had pulled from the whole thing. And we're waiting, I think it's thirty to forty-five days for the final report to come that will flush it out. I had a chance... I had a chance last Wednesday morning to be on the Jeff Lidle Program on Naples Daily News, which is online. He had one subject he wanted to talk about and that was our capital budget situation. And so, it was a great opportunity to talk about what our needs are, what some of the current problems that we're dealing with are and what they will be if we don't find a solution to it. He was curious as to why we had made the decision the night before and I tried my best to explain that to him and that it was only a one-year solution and we have to start now figuring out what we're going to do on down the line. Last Friday was Literacy Day at Riverdale. That was the first, as Jerry says, annual. There were nine authors there who had all paid their own way to get here, one from as far west, Washington State, and wrote books that were aimed at older teens. Group of benefactors bought fourteen hundred books and passed them out to students who then had an opportunity to meet the teachers, to meet the authors in class the day before, brought the books to the tables and had the authors sign them. It was a great event, first time it was done and I know they're going to want to do it again. They had food concessions, they even had a DJ, how you can dance in the middle of the day when the sun's beating down on you, I don't know, but they were doing a good job of it. And as Jerry Ware said a while ago, we had the last of the student assignment meetings last night at Dunbar and we've got to do a better job of turning people out for those so we can make sure that the message gets to as many people as we possibly can. Mr. Martin, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Nothing this evening, sir, thank you.
Dr. Graham.
Well, I'll finish the legislative update. The Transition Accountability Plan is what, what it's being phrased. The commissioner at the last State Board of Education meeting presented a new version of the accountability plan, basically the formula that is used for schools to get their grades. And what she presented to the state board was pretty much stripped of many, many things that have been in the accountability plan all along. Probably the most significant overall omission was that no longer is there anything that can keep a school, can take a school's grade away. So, for instance, if a school failed to have ninety-five percent of their students test, automatically, no matter what your score was, you could go from an A to a B, a B to a C, you would lose a grade. There's nothing in there now that would cause you to lose a grade. They've taken away the attendance requirement, which disturbs me greatly. They have taken away all of the, at the high school level, on the non-performance side, there were points for participation in AP courses, well, not just AP, but upper level courses, there were performance points as well. At the middle school level, there were also points and we don't know if those have been taken away or not, but the bottom line is, many, many things were taken away. At the State Board of Education meeting, the commissioner was told by the state board chair, "You need to get input. We see what you've done, you've given this some thought, you need to get input from superintendents, school board, school districts, et cetera, et cetera, and then come back with a final product." Because at the state board, it was simply for them to see where she was in the process. And the final direction from the state board chair was, "When it comes back, it must work because we're going to stop changing it." Well, that was all sort of good news, except we were disturbed about some of the things that were taken out because no one has said, "We don't want to be accountable." We've just said, "Be reasonable about the consequences and the timeline." What's happened since then, and that was just, I think, three weeks ago, whenever it was, I was in Orlando for that meeting. The legislators have to take the plan because there are statutes in place based on the former accountability plan that they are now going to have to look at because the law says one thing and it's in conflict with the plan. So, the disturbing news on yesterday's legislative update call is that it doesn't appear that the commissioner's going to change anything about what she's presented. And we're unsure who's really actively lobbying the legislators about putting some of the things back in. The superintendent of Duval County was at the state level at one, when the original plan was written and so he has been very vocal and wrote a letter right away and said, "These are, this is why we put those things in there and why are you taking them out and you may want to reconsider this." I was under the impression that the commissioner was going to continue to get input and that she would ultimately take back to the state board something different. Our lobbyist is under the impression that she's pretty set in what she presented. Isn't that what you heard yesterday? She's pretty set in what she presented. So, we're unsure, so what I gathered from is, we're relying on the legislators to address some of the things in our accountability plan and that's, it makes me a little nervous because I'm not sure they understand all the issues and so, we're lobbying, I can say that. Our lobbyist is lobbying on behalf of our district, but I told him I would be talking to some superintendents because I know the superintendents have some very strong feelings about some of the things that have been taken out. So, the school accountability plan that is being toyed with in the legislature right now is not the one we've been working with. It is a, it is a stripped-down model and at every level and so we have some concerns about that. So, that's something we're going to follow carefully. So, that's what Mrs. Morgan asked me to clear up. Youth in Government, I appreciated that a student came forward to, it's a fabulous, fabulous experience for children, it's a fabulous organization. I would caution the board to be thoughtful if we begin to fund extracurricular programs. We want to be careful about that and I will tell you, it is such a good, a good civics experience, there is value in getting the community involved and there are probably grants out there for that sort of thing. My kids traveled every year and it was supported by the community. So, I just wanted, but it is, everything she said is true. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. The accreditation visit went very, very well. We gave lots of kudos to Dr. Carlin on the day of the report. I just want to tell you that the chair said to me more than once, "Your students were so polite everywhere we went, your teachers have such expertise and professionalism, your office staff, we usually see it in a central office, everybody's on their best behavior, but in every, every place we went, there was professionalism, there was expertise." So, I asked the principals and staff to stay after and most of you left, Mr. Scott stayed in the back and so I have a witness, but I just shared with them just how powerful their work is and was particularly for that visit because the visit went the way it went because they took it seriously and worked hard. So, I'm grateful to staff and also to the community members who participated. We had them on several interview groups and several at the dinner and all were more than willing to participate, which is encouraging. Take Stock Luncheon, as already been said, it was fabulous. This Saturday, I just want to remind you and people in the community that are watching and people that are here, the Southwest Florida Reading Festival is Saturday, ten to four at Centennial Park in Harborside. We have two booths there. We will have Lee County staff there all day reading. One person will be reading in English, another will be reading in Spanish, so we're excited about that. So, if you have a chance to pop by the park on Saturday, there will be people there all day. And one, Drug House Odyssey, I'm going Thursday. And it's, it's, I'm going to go, I think, with Hancock Creek Elementary is who's going to be there when I'm there. And just one reminder, and this is as much for the students as anybody, spring break starts Friday. This is Tuesday, so there are a couple of days left of the quarter and teachers work on Friday and then they begin their spring break and I trust that everyone will have a safe one. I used to say to my students and staff, "Please be smart, don't want to read about you in the paper during break." But I wish everybody a happy spring break and I continue to be grateful to have the opportunity to lead this district.
Ms. Dozier and Mrs. Morgan, are you going to Tallahassee next week?
Yes.
I just wondered, based upon what she told us regarding the comments by the commissioner, whether that ought to be something that's brought up at the consortium meeting?
Oh, yeah.
And if you could get a consensus of, I'll call it outrage, and bring that back to us, we could write a collective letter expressing our concerns going forward. So, if you could do that for us, I'd be...
And what cabinet's doing for Mr. Sarah that we can share with you, the things we believe need to be included that have been omitted.
I don't want to be out of step with what you're interested in. I just, I just want to...
There are superintendents within the consortium that have already been quite outspoken.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I started to make a recommendation to y'all that we put a letter together for our delegation, but until we've had an opportunity to actually collectively hear from some other individuals and find out what they're doing, I think that it would be a little premature to do that right now, but very possibly it may be because I know letter writing is a big part of the lobbying and very possibly, when we come back from Tallahassee, there'll be quite a few letters that we might put out to not only our delegation, but different parts of the legislature, leadership particularly.
April first is our next special school board meeting at two PM, immediately followed by a briefing meeting and the school board action meeting at six PM. I know of a business to come before us, is there a motion for adjournment?
Sub moved.
Ms. Dozier, second by Mr. Armstrong. All in favor signify by saying aye. This meeting is adjourned.